Okay, we're ready? You ready, Erica? Okay. So I'm gonna call this meeting of the Select Board, which is a joint meeting with the Board of Health to order at 4:00 PM on June 25th. And I'll have Dr. McNabb open the Board of Health meeting.
Yes, well, good afternoon, everyone. Special meeting with the Select Board for June 25th is now open to the Board of Health and all members physically present.
Okay, great. We have one member online, John Holgate, the rest. And Matt Fee is not present yet, so. Okay. The agenda is short. The purpose of this meeting was to bring, we're trying to do more joint meetings where we get together and review areas of common interest with other boards to improve collaboration across town government. And so this meeting was scheduled with the purpose of, oh, Matt Fee is online, okay. With the purpose of getting an update on all the PFAS-related issues and projects that obviously is an area of shared concern between the Board of Health and the Select Board. So I think what we'll do is, public comment is not on the agenda, but are there folks present who would like to speak? Or you just hear it? Okay, okay. So, so we will accept public comment with the standard rules of three minutes. Try to avoid repetitive comments and who would like to go first? When you're speaking, we're gonna have you come sit in this chair because the owl needs to pick up your voice.
I thought you wanted to do public comment first or after you present what you guys were doing?
General public comment. Is there any general public comment on items not on the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking public comment for items like for this discussion.
No, for items not on the agenda. Okay, all right, great. So then we'll go to the one agenda item we have, which is the review of PFAS update from, and I'll let Greg take it away.
Oh, great. Yeah, might as well, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. The Town Manager asked me to put together an update, project update for the town sponsored projects that relate to PFAS. You know, this is our regular project update meeting, update session. We've had seventeen of these since we've started looking into PFAS-related issues around the islands since 2020. Although, looking at it, I realized we haven't had a real full one to the board since a year ago, May. Although, we have talked about PFAS, ending contracts and other issues, but I'm surprised it's been a year. Time goes by, but this is the seventeenth public update to the Select Board regarding projects. In 2019, the town recognized the importance of this emerging issue. I had never heard of PFAS. Many of us had never heard of PFAS at that point. It was brought to our attention by the airport. And once the airport brought it to our attention, we immediately started to look at how we can start assessing PFAS issues, potential issues on municipal properties around the island. As early as July 20th, 2020, we engaged in our first contract with CDM Smith to conduct an island-wide assessment. And that was just delayed because of COVID. We would have hopefully started earlier. But we did recognize the importance and we started right away. The Town Manager also put together an interdepartmental work group to help, I guess, corral all the different areas of concern regarding PFAS. And I'd like to recognize and thank the work of the Town Project Manager, the Public Health Director, including the Acting Public Health Director, who cannot be with us here tonight due to a family emergency, the Water Company Director, the Water Department Director, the Sewer Department Director, DPW Director, Solid Waste Manager, the Environmental Contaminant Specialist, which is a position we created specifically for PFAS, and the Communications Manager, all of whom meet weekly. We meet every Thursday. Some of us all can't meet at the same time, but for the most part, for these four years, we've been meeting every Thursday to discuss issues and ongoing strategies regarding what we're finding while our PFAS assessment. And I also like to thank the ancillary members of our work group, the Airport Manager, the Fire Chief, who comes to our meetings occasionally, and various consultants, including the CDM Smith team, who've been very instrumental in helping pushing us forward with our PFAS assessments. So, since 2020, the town has committed $15 million to various PFAS-related initiatives. I like to point out, there's only a, there's really no presentation. It's just an agenda item summary that is in the packet and online. And I do have some extra copies here for the Board of Health if they don't have them. And with those fifteen, $15 million, sorry, $15 million dollars appropriated through three town meetings, that has created twenty contracts for roughly ten PFAS-related projects. Some of those projects have multiple contracts, like the water main expansion project west of the airport. To date of that $15 million, well, when I put the AIS together, 4.7 million has been expended. However, more money has been spent because the water main invoices have started to come in. So we've actually spent a little more than 4.7 million right now. And I'd like to point out that our, the way we're approaching this is very methodical. We're not just putting together projects. The first project was a PFAS assessment of potential island-wide sources of municipal properties. And from then, we've developed a PFAS cycle. It's on your map. A very unique and proprietary analysis of PFAS sources and potential receptors on the island. And because we're a closed system, it's pretty unique. Using the analysis of this PFAS cycle, we've been putting together various projects that have come to the Select Board for approval over the past three and a half years. I'd also like to point out that throughout our process, we've been meeting as regularly as we can with our Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection partners. They're obviously very busy themselves. They've been invited to this meeting, but they're just busy. But we do, we have had several meetings with them. And we've also been keeping an eye on national guidelines regarding PFAS, especially through the EPA. So let's just a general overview on the, on the AIS. There is a list of all the projects. The contract numbers, how much has been expended, whether they're open and closed, as well as the funding sources and how much is remaining in the funding sources. But at this point, I'd like to introduce the Town's Project Manager, Chuck Larson, just to update the status of the several current project, projects that are not closed, that are currently in the works.
They're in the green.
They're in the green, but they're also listed separately a couple of pages later. Yeah, I think so, when Chuck is, so Chuck, take it away if you can, Eric.
Yeah, good afternoon. You hear me okay?
Yes, Chuck.
Okay, thanks. So our last update to the Select Board was in May of 2023. And the projects are included in the Agenda Item Summary. In the Agenda Packet, you can follow along. And these are, you know, what I'm gonna be providing are the current PFAS-related projects. There are seven projects that I'm gonna go through rather quickly. We have a lot going on. And I'll just go through them as they're shown on the Agenda Item Summary. The first on the list identifies the written protocols and procedures that were prepared for use by town employees when working in areas of known or suspected PFAS contamination. These were developed by CDM Smith. This includes handling and managing material during construction, health and safety considerations, and requirements for managing excess material that includes stockpiling, transportation, sampling, and disposal if needed. The protocols focus on work for underground utilities and catch base and cleaning. And these documents are available to the public on the town's PFAS webpage. The next item is the project for groundwater and surface water sampling at the landfill. This project is underway and the, it's the execution of a work plan that was submitted to Mass DEP for review and approval in December of 2021. Yeah, that's right, 2021. And the goal of the work plan was to understand the potential environmental impacts of PFAS at the landfill. At our last Select Board update in May of 2023, we were still waiting for response and approval from the Mass DEP on the December 2021 submittal. On September 1st of 2023, Mass DEP approved the work plan as submitted, and we got going on sampling. Sampling of the surface water and groundwater stations was performed by CDM Smith in fall of 2023 and spring of 2024. We are waiting on final lab results and analysis by CDM Smith. A landfill assessment report will be prepared and submitted to Mass DEP in August 2024. The next project on the list is the On-Call Projects with CDM Smith for a range of PFAS-related consulting services. When requested in writing by the town, these services may include reviewing technical reports and documents about PFAS and PFAS contamination, including the reports prepared by the Nantucket Airport for the Massachusetts Contingency Plan, MCP, project, responding to public inquiries regarding PFAS study efforts, preparing materials for public outreach and communication, fact sheets, infographics, FAQs, and so forth, attending public meetings and Select Board updates on PFAS activities, and expanding and/or updating strategies that may be adopted by the town for PFAS reduction and control. The next project is wastewater influent sampling, Year Two. In the May 2023 update to the Select Board, CDM Smith presented the results for the Year One Wastewater Sampling Program. This included sampling of influent at the Surfside and Sconset plants, several pump stations, a couple of septic haulers, and landfill leachate. Year Two followed in the footsteps of Year One to collect additional samples and provide more information as to the PFAS compounds and concentrations entering the sewer system and treatment plants. This is a town-initiated and voluntary sampling program. This is not mandated by any federal or state authority. The goal is to have information and proactively identify opportunities for PFAS source reduction and control in the wastewater and sewage sludge. Year One of the sampling project provided insight to initiate the next project, the Foam Fractionation Study. This is a study by CDM Smith, Foam Fractionation. The project was launched in October 2023, and it was identified as a possible future project mentioned in the last Select Board update. Foam fractionation is a treatment being performed on samples of the aeration tank foam and lean for leachate to evaluate the effectiveness as a treatment option to concentrate PFAS chemicals for destruction. The destruction of PFAS is a separate technology. As the name applies, implies, bubble formation in the foam is used to separate the PFAS from the aqueous mix. The question is, can this technology work for our liquids in PFAS compounds? This project will help answer that question and provide recommendations for next steps. The next project on the list is the town's SRF Water Main Expansion Project. Design was completed last summer. Construction started in fall of 2023. All water mains are installed, and water to the last section was turned on in early May. The project extended the availability of public water to approximately eighty homes on Nobodir Way, Monahanset Road, Oakrall Avenue, Lover's Lane, Webster Road, and the southern section of Skyline Drive. This was in response to the PFAS contamination identified in private wells in the area. Tom's Way was added to the project in late 2023 and also completed. Construction is complete for the summer and will resume in the fall for remaining items and final paving. The project was designed by CDM Smith and construction oversight is by Environmental Partners Group. CC Construction is the contractor. And the last on my list is the amended private well regulations and the new requirement for PFAS sampling and testing, which took effect on January 1st, 2024. These were prepared following a Mass DEP model private well regulation, which required sampling and testing for PFAS in certain situations. Implementation of the regulation is underway, and the regulations are the subject of the next portion of this joint Select Board and Board of Health meeting. So this goes through, this concludes my update, a rather quick update on the current PFAS projects. Greg, anything you want to add?
Thank you, Chuck. We do, I want to point out, we do have, in addition to Chuck, we have Andy Miller, who is the Senior Project Manager from CDM Smith, also on the Zoom, if anybody has any questions, as well as, I believe, David Gray, the Sewer Director. Unfortunately, Mark Willett, the Water Department Manager, Director, is out sick today. But if anybody has any questions on the current projects, or even the projects that have already been closed, feel free, we do have some experts online.
Any questions from either of the boards?
I think so.
Okay.
Oh, you can go ahead, Karen. So about the bubbles treatment, I'm just wondering, it sounds like we're not sure if it will work for us, and I'm, I would think that we're not the first people to have this problem. I would imagine that there are wastewater treatment centers all over the country and world, so I guess I was confused. It sounded like we weren't sure if that would work for us.
Yep, that's exactly.
So if we're not sure, does nobody else use it? Are we trying to be pioneers here? I don't, I'm just curious.
Chuck or Andy, if you'd like to take that?
So I would say a little of the above, you know, so, you know, I think we're at a point where the technology has been proven in many situations. We're taking the next step of using actual, you know, samples from Nantucket with our, you know, liquids and concentrations and types of compounds to evaluate its effectiveness.
So then would it be shipped off islands?
So this would be, you know, I'll let Andy go into more detail, or even, you know, David. But, you know, this will provide information to say, all right, what are the next steps so that we could potentially, you know, bring the equipment on island and, you know, run a pilot, perhaps, to test it in our actual conditions. And we're looking at both landfill leachate and the liquids within the treatment plant as well. So this is the first step, you could call it, you know, step one of what could be multiple steps.
I also wondered about the, what is the plant I have, couldn't find where the, the town for handling of the PFAS, of PFAS-contaminated products? I know at the airport, they're dumping it in the sandpit. I didn't know if that was what you guys have in the town report. Is that what we're saying, is to just dump it somewhere else on island? Or this is the, what you guys put together, something different? I would think that that should be shipped off island and somewhere that handles that, but.
So again, the experts, but are you talking about the protocols?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Andy or Chuck, you want to talk about where you're at, the protocols and all the legalese that gets intertwined?
So we've developed the protocols, but we have not had a project where we've actually used them, you know, with town employees to do work. The protocols have a flowchart with a very systematic step-by-step, you know, process that we'd have to follow. You know, if we're gonna be working in areas where we might encounter these materials and, you know, how to handle the materials, and if there's excess materials, you know, the procedures for stockpiling, testing, you know, maintaining a stockpile. And then ultimately, if the material comes back as contaminated, we'd be looking at, you know, disposal options, which could include shipping it off island.
So, and I'm not trying to take over the meeting. I'm just confused because aren't the airport, they are town employees, that is town land, so if they have found PFAS, they've tested all the soil, they've found it, and it is not being handled, it sounds like, the way that you're suggesting. So you have a perfect case scenario there, I guess, that I would love to see the protocol put towards.
So what you bring up is, you know, an important distinction. The airport is falling under an entirely different set of rules under the MCP program that, you know, with their contaminated site. As a designated site, you know, and is Noah there? He could probably speak to, you know, what he's done, you know, with his project and what his requirements are. But.
They're putting it in the sandpit.
So we're not, you know, we're not, you know, able to take materials to the airport and dispose of them. Although, the airport, you know, has, you know, you know, requirements that they need to follow for disposal too, that are reviewed and approved by Mass DEP.
Thanks.
I know it sounds confusing, and maybe I'm not doing a good job explaining about, Andy, maybe you could.
Yeah, you know, I was just gonna offer to, you know, can you guys hear me? Can everyone hear me? I just wanted to add some, I, my name is Andy Miller from CDM Smith as the Project Manager. So just to explain, the airport is an independent project being governed by the Massachusetts Contingency Plan, and they have to follow those rules, regs, guidance, et cetera, for the materials, you know, found to be containing PFAS. And they're, you know, handling them in accordance with the programs set up by their LSP, working with airport officials in sight. The protocols that Chuck and Greg were referencing was the town proactively asked us to develop protocols that could be followed for town utility workers, water, sewer, DPW, stormwater, and such, when they were working in an area on the streets that are outside the limits of the airport in which PFAS might be encountered. So, you know, initially, this was identified as a concern, a potential need for some of the streets near the airport, but were outside of the boundaries of the airport's Massachusetts Contingency Plan. So I would view this as a proactive effort or step the town's taken to protect its employees. And, you know, for the purpose of this protocol, as Chuck referenced, is a very rigorously detailed, outlined flowchart that follows the appropriate process, also governed by the Massachusetts Contingency Plan should something be found. And if it's found, there's all sorts of steps that have to be gone through for it to be sampled and disposed of, likely off island. So that's the way I would explain it, if that's helpful.
If I could ask a follow-up, are there thresholds at which it is considered contaminated or not contaminated? Are there, are there, you know, the incidents, you know, like we talk about in water, parts per trillion or parts, are there, are there levels at which the response is different?
Yes, yes, there is. I, you know, I'm not an LSP, but there are several, not a lot, but there are several PFAS standards relative to soil that Mass DEP has put in place that are governed by the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. So that would be the standard used if any of the materials, you know, collected by, let's say, the Water Department when they were doing work and samples, that would be the standard used to address those soils. That would be the baseline.
Thanks, Andy. Matt, did you have a question? Matt Fee?
Yeah, just a simple one. I know that the state is regulating like six or eight of these, some number, but there's thousands out there, and my understanding, it's kind of like whack 'em all. Everything we're doing, is it likely to still be able to clean out some of the others, or do we know that yet? From a, you don't, you understand my question? Like, will these processes that we're discussing going to take care of, you know, all of these sorts of, all this family of chemicals? Or is it gonna be certain ones, and we're gonna have to do something else again?
Not, I guess, my answer to that would be not necessarily all, because, you know, when you sample, there are a number of compounds that show up in the sample result, depending upon how many parameters you test for. But we're, you know, based upon the regulations, we work toward removal or treatment, whatever, of those that are regulated. Now, oftentimes, that's going to address most, but perhaps not all, but that's not even necessarily the case. And I guess there's one other thing I would say, is we're probably all in this day and age, working under the presumption that we've been able to identify those PFAS compounds that present the most health risks. So I would venture to guess that those are, from our understanding of the technology today, you know, those are the ones that we would be most concerned about, and those are the ones that regulators have taken steps to regulate, also based upon their more likely presence.
I have a question here in Canada for a help. This is more of a household question. You know, people are having PFAS found in their water, just like, you know, playing filtration system. And we've been told by the DEP that they don't take the filters, that it's hazardous waste, and that hazardous waste data filters aren't taken. So that's the first question, what do we do with them? The second is, if you have a house filter, it's just worse, you know, like moving sand and stuff, but all, and your water is PFAS, is that, is that a contaminant? Is that considered a contaminant filter now? And so what do we do with these?
Do we have an answer to that yet?
I don't think we have an answer unless.
So I know this is something that Chris Low is certainly talking about at the DPW side, you know, in terms of the solid waste and potentially, you know, collecting them. I, I think this is an important point, that, right, we've got these different media that are gonna be collecting or concentrating PFAS. What's the responsible thing to do with them? You know, I think that's a topic for a deeper discussion with the Board of Health and Solid Waste and CDM Smith.
Thank you.
Chris, unless you have anything to offer immediately, I think we'll put that on the, in the hopper for follow-up.
We have a couple of comments, Madam Chair.
Okay.
If you read our last Board of Health meeting, you know, said we had a pretty open opinion about what we had to do with the airport, and it's mentioned here in the forum, we really wasn't interested in Board of Health especially. It is almost like the full-on contrary to the pocket. As far as the role regulations that were, went to effect on the first of this year, I think we didn't do a great job of implementing. There's a little confusion about what to do. And more important to me is, if you should be unfortunate to actually test positive, we haven't really given people instructions about what to do. So on our next Board of Health meeting in July, we'll put on the agenda a further discussion of these regulations. Perhaps delaying them or bringing them off, or we will see. And we really need to have somebody, and maybe this working with helpless draft, what do you do? Can you have a positive test?
Okay. Any other board members who'd like to ask questions or comment before I take public comment?
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
About, from, that the state has, or I think Mass DEP said that they have to start monitoring the well, well systems, or the public water, municipal water. And it's, I know it's by 2027. Are we waiting on that, or is that something that we can like, we're gonna be pioneers with the bubbles, be pioneers with this, and sort of start doing it now? Because I do think we're gonna, you know, it's, we have a sole source aquifer. If it's in people's wells, it's in the aquifer. So I would love that we would start, and we could start doing that sooner than 2027.
Your statement that if it's in wells, it's in the aquifer, may or may not be accurate. I'd like to get someone to actually comment on that, because.
And unfortunately, with the Water Director ill today, I probably don't have as much, but I do know that he's already taken actions regarding the testing. And of course, as a public water supply, he is required to test regularly for the PFAS 6 and so forth. But if Andy or, or Chuck have a better response about the new EPA guidelines that are gonna go into effect in 2027 and what the public water supplies are required to do.
Yeah, Greg, if I can respond to that, um, the, um, the, the reference I think you made are the EPA standards. Now, Mass DEP put in their drinking water standards for the PFAS 6 in 2022 and required quarterly sampling of, uh, municipal supply wells for a community the size of Nantucket. So the water department in Nantucket has been, already been doing that for, for two solid years. And I, while I believe it's a quarterly basis, I don't know that he, that mark has had to drop down. And so there is a data set already building and, um, um, most of the wells have been PFAS free from, based upon the detection limits used. There, there's one where some minor occurrence, um, has occurred in some of the samples, but unfortunately Mark's not here to speak to that. Um, so that is already being done. Now, eventually, the method and the detection limits will probably change as a result of the EPA standards, but you can rest assured that that's being done. Um, as far as the sole source aquifer, the way I would view it is the entire island is sand and gravel, the entire island is a sole source aquifer. So the municipal wells are set in that, anyone's domestic well is set in that, it's really one in the same is the way, uh, I would respond to that question.
Thank you. Um, uh, there is a, a FAQ page on the town website that speaks to testing of, uh, Wana Comets Wells. So there's information available online for the public. So, um, okay, so any other questions, board, uh, anybody online from the board, Dawn or Matt? Um, okay, um, so I'll open to questions and comments from the public if you would come sit here so we can pick you up. Bruce? Just make sure you do the usual, identify yourself and we'll hold you to the three-minute, um.
Thank you, Matt. I am Mr. Mandel out of in Matigan. Uh, we're concerned with our domestic water wells in Matigan. We're testing our wells and citizens are paying it for themselves. PFAS has been found in at least six domestic wells. The big concern we have is, you know, Mass DEP gave us 10 years to mine the unwind cell at the landfill. Which, as you all know, it's loaded with PFAS-containing elements from decades of disposal of those before we knew they were bad. And we didn't complete that mining in the 10 years and the Mass DEP gave us another five years, that's an extension. And we didn't complete it. So that cell is still unmined. And there are tens of thousands of tons of unmined material there. And we're very concerned because every time it rains, when there's snow melt, that water runs into the groundwater, it runs into Long Pond, it runs into our very shallow aquifer. As you all know, the aquifer is very shallow and thin in Matigan. And we're now finding out by testing our wells, and it's not cheap to test your wells for PFAS. We now know that there is PFAS in the domestic wells in Matigan. And the big question is, what is the town doing about completing the mining of that unwind cell to protect the residents of these in Matigan? It's very important. So this is an open question and it's a big concern. And I thank you for the time and I hope that we'll be able to get an answer from you as to what's happening. You know, right now, if you can, tell us what's happening, uh, rather than just, uh, thank you very much for your comments.
Well, uh, these are probably complex questions that aren't gonna get answered right now, but I am making note of all of them. And I want to make sure, um, and how the, how the leachate, how does the leachate testing, um, tie into this would be, are they connected? And?
They're all connected. And I don't know if Chris Low is on, Erica?
He is.
Um, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Chris, but if you're there, if you can help answer Mr. Mandel, um, or even, uh, Drew, uh, the DPW director. But in the absence of that, I know it's been a huge discussion that's been ongoing and that's why we have the groundwater testing, uh, project going on at the landfill. So I also offered up to CDM Smith, um, if they'd like to, um, answer too. I like how people look to me, but I literally am not the expert.
So, so Chris, Chris is unmuted. Chris, do you have anything to add at this point?
Uh, Brooke, no, I, I don't have any more to add than what Andy has already discussed. We have had meetings with Mass DEP, we have, uh, the, uh, the well samples um, that have tested positive for, uh, PFAS. And, um, we, well, uh, CDM Smith will be following up with a report to Mass DEP towards the end of August. As far as the, uh, the mining soils go, um, the, the mining operation has ceased and that we do have, uh, spoils or, you know, I guess, uh, spoils, uh, stockpiles, um, those stockpiles, to the best of my knowledge, have not been sampled. Uh, but it's a part of a plan that, uh, solid waste and DPW will be working on and, uh, trying to, uh, come up with a, uh, a, a direction that we can present to, uh, CDM Smith as well as, uh, Mass DEP. Um, get some direction going that way.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Um, thanks, Bruce.
Thank you, Matt. And, you know, the only really filters that we can buy that capture PFAS are activated charcoal. And the breed of filters and all those things, they don't capture PFAS. So people are buying these and using it for their drinking water in Matigan. They're expensive. And those activated charcoal filters run about $200 a piece, not counting the device that goes into. And there's no way to dispose of those.
But we're already have that question queued up about disposal plans.
This is our concern, at least in Matigan. I was trying to speak for them. I'm a member of the Board of the Atmatigan Conservation Association. I'm the chairperson of the Matigan, uh, area plan, uh, work group. So we're very involved. This is a very serious problem and it's a health problem for us. So glad to have the health people involved too. Thank you very much.
Chris, appreciate it. Somebody else?
Hi, Aisha.
Hi, hello. Say, Aisha Khan, 11 South Valley Road.
Thank you.
So a couple of things, I know the filters are actually a huge issue, especially if we're all gonna take concentrated PFAS and take it to Matigan in a landfill that will then potentially basically concentrate our PFAS and then get it to another area of the island. Um, EPA right now was recommending a suggestion they had, which is not a good suggestion, but it is, their suggestion is storing all PFAS material into a cylinder block facility. That was what they said, because there is no way to destruct PFAS right now. Even in incinerators, they can't stay at really high levels that break the bonds, like the hazardous, uh, so, uh, hazardous, sorry, or, uh, incinerators can't sustain that temperature at very high periods. So they'll go high and then they'll dip down, which releases PFAS into the environment. So, um, they can't break it. The destruction methods that everyone's looking into are great for looking into right now, but they're not on scale. They don't work in real life situations. We can't scale them up to a possibility. A lot of times they're very high energy, but they're very expensive. So those are all, and if there were options, we'd be doing them and not having this conversation. So, um, there's really no way to destroy it right now and their recommendation was to store everything, store the AFF, store gear, store filters, it's, I don't, I wish there was a better option, but that was what we were told, um, when I asked. And then, um, the other issue was that, uh, or last time I checked, hazardous waste does not take filters. So when, even if you take them to hazardous waste, they can't accept it because it's, I guess, they don't fit into the regulations, what they can accept. So then they throw it into, even if you say that they'll throw it into the landfill. Um, and then I think we have to be very careful when we call something PFAS-free, just like words, language matters. By PFAS-free, I think if, if it didn't test for the PFAS 6, that's really important to distinguish that between PFAS-free because PFAS, you know, there's a family of over 12,000 PFAS chemicals. So to call it PFAS-free or redefining it as all 12,000 aren't in there, because that isn't accurate. So it's, it might just be, when we say PFAS-free, just a six, or if we could just clarify, they're saying those things. Um, and then there was, uh, the question that Malcolm you had asked about maybe some follow-ups. I have some great ideas. There's a great university, Dr. Phil Brown, working with Northeastern on follow-ups of what to do when someone does test positive for PFAS in their well water, in their regular water, how to follow up, blood work, um, follow up with their doctor and medical provider, because I think that is what we're really here and talking about. It's not, do you have it, do not, it's once finding out, do you have it, where did it come from, but what can you do? Like, what are the things we need to do? Do they need to test their liver functions? Do they need to test their thyroid? What are the things that we need to allow the community members to get the medical help that they need? So I think those, there's great, um, there's great guidance on that that I would love to share with you guys. And I've, I know that, um, our office is already doing it and so it's totally possible. And I would love for Nantucket to be doing it on a larger scale.
It's a great continuing, Ed, that, um.
Yeah, there's a great, um, continuing medical education. So it's already approved by CDC and it's a continuing med- medical education, um, video that's available for doctors to watch with the follow-up steps that is needed for people who might be concerned about having PFAS in their blood. So it's, that's, I think that's what we're really here to find out, is if you have it, what are the things that you can do for your health?
Okay, thanks, Aisha. Still appreciate it. Somebody else? Megan?
Megan, yeah. Um, gonna rewind way back to the beginning when we were talking about the hazardous material and storing it. My understanding is, um, the Board of Health would have to, um, take part in assigning a site for that and go through, uh, Mass DEP for that. And they would have to know about the toxic hazardous waste site that we're gonna have to stockpile all this. Had that been looked into yet, where we might be storing that? Um, because I don't think it should come as a surprise that we're going to find PFAS and we're going to have to store it somewhere. I think we should start looking at how we're gonna do that and then also how we're gonna remove it from Nantucket. I don't think it's realistic to think it's gonna stay here. Um, there are locations that, with companies that will come and remove it and take it to a licensed facility. I think that's really important that we start looking at that and be proactive on this. It, it should not be a surprise, we're gonna find it. Um, so that was, that was one of my first kind of questions and comments regarding that, going way back. Also, I think the Board of Health needs to, um, take a peek at the, I'm, I'm gonna mess it up, but the plenary powers that the Board of Health has. Guys do have some powers when it comes to public health concerns. Um, and I understand that Mr. Giorgio wrote a, a very nice opinion. I don't agree with all of it. I think some of the wording in there is a little bit, not strong enough to make me think, oh gee whiz, you have no, no ability to do something here. I think the Board of Health does have plenary powers to do some things when it comes to, to public health concerns. And so it might be worth, um, maybe asking for independent councils to take a peek at that and see what you can do.
We have a lot of questions that we have to follow, essentially federal, federal regulations.
And I, I've spoken to two other, um, friends in other communities that are on boards of health and they, that's what they recommended. So, um, but they're not lawyers, but they are, they just sit on boards of health. And so, um, it, it might be worth just checking it out and seeing if there's anything you can do. Um, I know that's asking a lot. I know it, it's town council and we don't like to question town council and lawyers can sometimes be scary and say big words and whatnot, but it, it's definitely worth looking into because this is a concern. Um, and I also think that we need to start to examine the grants that are being applied for and what the stipulations are that we're looking at. Because it might be, sure, we looked at, um, almost a $400,000 grant for environmental mitigation at the airport, which I love. Like, I think that's great, let's go green. Um, but what do we have to do in return for that $400,000? Do we have to install something that may or may not compound potential health hazards? And if that's the case, maybe that $400,000 grant is not, it's not worth it. Maybe we can find a funding source elsewhere that doesn't, oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, you're at your three-minute.
Topic or three minutes total?
Total.
Total. Oh, I'm sorry, Donald says topic. I might start.
Well, this is a topic, PFAS, so. Either way, it's three minutes.
Either way, um, so it might be worth looking into something like that and, and just checking and seeing, you know, are we throwing good money after bad by doing that? Are we causing more problems? And I'm not saying don't look into environmental issues, I'm just saying we might wanna see.
Okay, wrap it up. Thanks, Sam.
Much.
Yep. Anybody else? Oh, hi.
Hi, Linda Durensis. Hi, Vlad Lance. I want to thank you for having this meeting. But I also want to urge you guys to be more proactive, um, because it just seems it's always reactionary in town. We found PFAS at the airport, it was reactionary. I want you, I would really implore everybody here to be more proactive. When we talked about shipping the PFAS off, we, I personally know that it can be shipped off. And we should be seriously looking at that. We're an island that shouldn't be buried in a sand pit. I don't believe that the airport is a country we can't touch. But that's like saying, you know, Russia's just being neighborly to Ukraine. I believe that we should be all working together. We're all, we all have this problem. As far as the opinion from town council, Malcolm, you said it at meetings, that lawyers, like, you're gonna get a lot of different opinions. And when a lawyer, I personally, you know, no one, um, says, would likely, likely preclude, I've been told, that's a really non-binding. And I'm not, I have great respect for Mr. Giorgio, but I'm just saying that I think that you guys, if the time has come to be really, really proactive, Clean Harbors has been contacted. They've been given the example of Nantucket, because we were told Nantucket couldn't ship anything off. Clean Harbors is ready to do it. They would be hired tomorrow and they could get PFAS off. We're an island, putting it in the, in the land, just like Mr. Mandel said. Every time it rains, every time the wind blows, it's blowing to somebody else. And the thing is PFAS kills people. If you would listen to the people that are neighbors at the airport and listen to their horror stories, you would, we need to be more proactive. We owe it to your neighbor. And so I just implore you all to please be more proactive. I, I mean, kicking the can down the thing, the bubble research that you asked about, if it was so great, there are 351 towns in this great state, they'd be all doing it because PFAS is a single prob- problem. And you know, we're one of the few towns in the state that hasn't shipped it off. And, and we're an island, you know, if you live in Framingham, it could go into Natick. But if it's in here, it's going, you know, the people that are fishing for bluefish out at Nobdeer? You, you think they know that it's going to be, it's contaminated PFAS? And you don't want the globe to cover a story like that. It will kill our tourism and that's what we live on. So I just would implore you people to be more proactive. Instead of saying, we're thinking about it, we're doing a study, do it. It's time to do.
Linda?
Yep.
Thanks.
Yep.
You, you got, there you go. Time's up. Thank you so much.
Um, can I make a comment about him, Jim?
Um, yeah, I just want to make sure that, that, uh, we have someone online, um, Meg Rully, Erica, can we?
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm Meg Rully. I'm a year-round resident and I live on Tom's Way and I've been directly impacted by PFAS. And I did just put together a statement, um, to sort of add on to what some of the other people were saying. But I want to say, I think it's safe to assume that everyone today at the meeting recognizes that PFAS is bad. It's bad for everyone, it's bad for people and everything. Um, and every day you see a newspaper article, a story on the news, um, talking about the dangers of PFAS, which are often referred to as forever chemicals. Um, and if you're attending this meeting today because you just learned that your well's contaminated, I just want you to know that you're not alone and you're not going crazy, uh, when you try to reach out to the town or the Mass DEP and no one gets back to you, or they send you web links, uh, with what to do. So I think that this public summit, because there have been other summits. So I think that this public summit, because there have been other summits and listening today, it sounds like there've been 17 different sessions since 2020 about PFAS. But this is really the first one that I've known where public comment can come and share. But I think it's a great first step to raise awareness that Nantucket, just like many other towns in the Commonwealth and the country, have FIFA contamination. And moving forward, I really do want to ask the town administration and the Board of Health to consider addressing three things. And I put in an acronym because that's easy for people to remember, which is REF or REF. And the first thing is R, which is response. And you know, my suggestion is the creation of a centralized FIFA hotline. The residents can call or email when they learn that their private well's contaminated. And if they have questions or just need a place where they really do feel heard. Ultimately, I think the goal would be to streamline and model a thoughtful response program for impacted residents. Sorry, it's like, this has been all year for us. So E is education. Collaborate on education efforts around, but not limited to well testing, filtration systems, getting water delivery to your house, but most importantly transparency by sharing data of the impacted areas of the island and hotspots. This gives residents resources to proactively protect their health. And you know, in our situation, the town and Mass DEP knew for years, at least two years, that there were FIFA contaminated wells, you know, within a block of us. And we just, you know, we, it took two years till we got a letter in the mail to get our wells tested. And then it takes several months after that to get results.
Hey, Meg? You're, you're, you want to get to F? Because your time's getting close.
And then F is just funding. Considering creating or introducing funding and grant programs for residents who need to connect to municipal water sources. So those are the three things. And I appreciate your time. I hopeful there'll be more transparency from the town and the Board of Health around this imminent hazard that impacts everybody. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Um, I'm sorry, anyone?
No, go ahead.
Oh, I just was gonna say that I spoke today at the state during a legal briefing about a bill that Senator Sutler, Seer?
Seer.
And Kate Hogan are bringing, all about PFAS and eliminating it from restricting intentional adding PFAS and the other harmful chemicals and cosmetics. And it was really interesting. And there were a number of Nantucket people from there, as well as some other cities across the state. So I do think this is a problem that is statewide. And I would love to see Nantucket really take a strong stance because we, we don't have anywhere else to go. We can't make more island. We can't put more places to dump it. And I, I love what Meg just said, because I do think I've not been shy about it happening to me. And I do think that you are sort of lost and, and like, where do you go? And I don't know that there's, it's great that there's a website, but I really think there should be a hotline and education and say like, this is what you can do. Here are the two companies that deliver water. Here's the type of filter, because a charcoal filter only takes out the long chain, not the soft, not the short chain, I believe. Is that true, Aisha? Yeah. So the short chain, so like the poet systems that they were putting in houses are charcoal, which only take out the short chain PFAS, not the long, or take out the long chain, not the short chain PFAS. So I think that that's like, we need, and I think educating all of our healthcare providers, because it's, it's fascinating when you start to think about all of the health issues that people experience having long-term exposure to PFAS.
All right, thanks. Joanne? Is it spoken? Skoken? Okay.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Joanne. Go ahead.
Um, I too spoke at the State House hearing today about my FIFA, my personal FIFA issue. I also live on Tom's Way, along with Meg Rully. And I guess one of the biggest stumbling blocks for me when it happened was that the DEP would say, would advise us to talk to our local Board of Health or Health Director. And that was kind of a stumbling block for us, because they wouldn't talk to us because of what was mentioned was potential litigation. So it was, we were on our own. And I mean, Meg Rully and me and my sisters, my brother, cousins, we all did a lot of work on it. But it's a real mind-boggling experience to figure out answers. And, you know, everyone's advice was talk to the Board of Health, talk to the Health Inspector. And that didn't happen. And it was really frustrating. I was also someone who wanted to shout from the rooftops to everyone who lived around me. And I tried to spread the word to get their well tested. But I also was hesitant to do that after I got my dressing down by the Board of Health one meeting. So I just want to put it out there that anything the town can do to educate those of us who are finding out our wells are not pure, it needs to get done. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay. Anybody else in the room want to speak? Um, I, I think I'm gonna avoid having everybody go around and around. So I, I know there will be continued conversation on this. And I appreciate everybody's input. You guys are gonna go back over the regulations at your next meeting, right?
And then some of the sent book?
Yep. And Carrie?
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm listening to the public comment and I've made notes here before. And I guess one of the things is, this is about health. Now, I think we need to be really, really clear. This is about health, not about property value, right? About health, people, long and short-term effects. We've talked about that there is, we have DEP, Board of Health, there's a period, we get some of the water results, Water Commission, CDM Smith. So there is data points out there. Are these all together in one place and accessible to people? So that we can start building that map of skill, of knowledge. Education is key. And one thing about education, I think, would be that I'd like to be erasing the fear aspect and starting to get strategies and solving. Can we can't, we can't get rid of PFAS, but there are things homeowners can do. There are things that we can do as individuals in terms of knowledge of what, where it is and how to protect ourselves. And to change that, I'd like your conversation to be more strategic-based and more positive based, like, based like that, with transparency being key. I mean, this is a field that always plays a meeting. I would say I, on the Board of Health, know it. So, yeah, I mean, that's something that we talked about in the meeting. So, you know, if you're in the, you know, I, we need to be more open all around.
Yeah, but the health directors.
Right.
Yeah. And that is the purpose of today's meeting, to do more of that. Areas of common interest. So I think, because we, and I want to encourage the community to monitor select board agendas, because we do get updates on a lot of issues. And, and somebody mentioned being pointed to a website. We have a really robust PFAS website that talks about, I mean, the, the, the items on the left are the airport, the water company, the summit itself, private wells, public presentations. There's a whole history of all of the documentation and the reports that have been given that people can go back and look at if they've missed them. So I really want to encourage the public to seek out information on their own and follow up by attending Board of Health meetings, speaking and public comments, sending letters. And I know, my experience as a board member is that this is an emerging issue, like, it, it's like, we now know about it and we know it's everywhere, but the technology to deal with it is not moving fast enough necessarily for us to address all these things. And I think Aisha's comment about the best recommendation we have from the EPA about what to do with filters is put them in a, a container somewhere, right? Because no one has figured out a way to manage them, right? So the answer is filter it out of your drinking water. And that creates a filter that we still don't have a technology for destruction to manage that. So this is emerging. And, you know, when I go to Mass Municipal Association and I talk about what we're doing in Nantucket on PFAS, I know communities who aren't even using the term yet. So, so we may not be doing as much, everything we could, but we are doing a lot as compared to other communities, in my understanding. So. Since I spoke to you, I shall let, but you need to come up here.
Aisha might be the most knowledgeable. Thank you. Sorry that I'm taking up more time. I think we have to be careful also getting with the word emerging, as far as regulations is true. But as far as the science, it's very clear. It's been going on for decades. And I think this is the issue that we're having is, just for a second, you had said it was health. It's a health issue. And I think the town and communities in the state has not been provided with accurate information and a plan on how to handle it. And I really am sympathetic for that, because I think it's a really tough place that people are put in. I don't think that they're provided with help on how to address it. And I think we as a community, town, everyone together should be seeking out the people who actually are giving input and information on how to, how to address it. It's just not coming always through the state or through a consultant. And there are researchers. And I, I think we can be a little bit strategic and savvy and reach out to them and say, hey, what are the blood work stuff? And how, how can we handle it? And okay, how, let's just call EPA and maybe they can't say it. Because sometimes what I've been told is that they can't implement things, because then they have to implement it to every city and every state. But they encourage us to do it privately and on our own. And that's something I've heard, just because it can move faster. And I think, I think I'm very sympathetic to a lot of people who are going through this, because for a second, they're very scared.
Yeah.
And they're finding it in their water. And I think for a second, what they're feeling is lack of empathy. And I don't want our town, I don't want our airports, I don't want our landfills to be the enemy. You guys did not make this. So when someone doesn't respond or something, it becomes a barrier. And I don't want our town to be that barrier. You guys are the barrier. So I think that's a big issue. You, there are companies who made this product, who deceived everyone. And they lied to a lot of people. And that's why it's where we are, where we are. And I think what happens is when the town doesn't respond, the people turn the town into the enemy. And you guys aren't. And I think that's, people are scared and we need to just address and talk to them. And I think that's maybe like, I don't know what that is, but it's, I think that that's what people need right now. And it's, we need to understand that there are fearful and there are real health, there's real health effects that come along with this. I just went to a conference and EPA did speak. And the people who were doing the multi, the MCLs, Maximum Contaminant, Contaminant Levels. And they told us the goal, the maximum contaminant goal is zero. It's always zero. So that means that's what is healthy. That's what is safe. So when we say the PFAS six is under 20, you're good. That's not actually accurate. It just means that's what's legal. And that's what's allowed.
Interesting.
So the goal and what is safe is always gonna be zero. And so we have to be very careful about how we explain this, because then as the regulations get lower and lower, as more science comes on, then we look like liars, well, you said it was safe at this, but now it's safe because we shouldn't be using that word, safe. Sorry.
That's okay. Thanks. Okay, so, um, anything else that boards want to address on this? And we, we have, I've kept a list of, and I'll share that with you, Malcolm. And I really appreciate everybody's comments coming out today. And
How will these questions be answered? Through the select board of health?
I think it's gonna be, most of these are, well, the stuff about the landfill, I think is, is gonna be the solid waste planning team through the select board. And some of the other things, the disposal stuff, it's probably more that direction. And then I think the, the response time and making sure that the data that's available isn't, I believe it's all available publicly already. But perhaps we can do some public outreach on where to find it as a follow-up to this meeting. It exists online in a very public way. I know it's all out there. So really just pointing people in the right direction to be able to see it and help. But I did hear the, the, that we could do a better job of supporting people who are experiencing this issue in their homes and helping them decide what to do. So.
This working group is there. He's the official chair.
So this is a, this is a town manager team? No, it's not me. But it, but
Probably me. I mean, I, I coordinate everybody.
Yeah. So Greg's here and he, so maybe what we should do is Malcolm and I as chairs and Greg just circle up on follow-up.
If we wait a little bit, we should have a new health director. And that will be a big help.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a new, and a new Mike, a new emerging contaminant specialist.
Yep.
And we can
Okay. All right. Terrific. If there's nothing else, Malcolm, you want to entertain a motion to adjourn your meeting?
Motion to adjourn, Board of Health. Jim moves adjourned, second.
Second.
Very second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And for the select board, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second? Malcolm, you want a second? Matt's second. Okay, by roll call, Malcolm?
Yes.
Matt, Matt?
Yes.
Dawn? Oh, is she still here?
She is.
She's like, yeah.
She may be having trouble finding it. Tom?
Hi.
Hi. I'm here.
Okay, a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Okay, all right. And the chair votes aye, that's unanimous. Thanks, everybody for coming and, and we will follow up.
Thank you, everybody online.